Absolutely. Spoder. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Cough.
Colt.
And President. Sorry. There's always going to be. Mr. Matt.
Here.
Mr. Paulus, training here. Mr. Robinson. Epsom.
You will see on our agenda that we have just we'll stand for the plencher in a moment, but you'll see on the agenda that we have this Karen Suter to be sworn in. We did that during the week. We don't have to do swearing in at board meetings, and so we thought it was best just to not go a few days without a court. So we thought it was best to swear her in, so I swore her in on Monday at about lunchtime. A really elaborate ceremony.
It's like a courthouse, you know.
Did you do it here in Hampshire?
I did. On that, Mr. Mr. Cough, can you do this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a true and just strong.
Okay. Do we have a evening, Mr. Hedges? Do we have anyone kind of?
Yes, we do, sir. William Swalwell.
Thank you.
Flying Swalwell family.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to bring you all up to date on a couple of efforts that I've been working on through both the Historical Society, the Business Development Commission, and Beautification. I thought it would be better just to come before you and give you an update as to where we're at, and if at any point you have any questions, please interrupt me, and if you can do that, let us fly. I wanted to go over the Historical Society's goals for this year. We're most active in the pretty much the school year, from the fall till the spring. We have a total of eight different programs that we're hosting this year. The first one went off last week with a great success, I might say. John Kunsel came into town along with Dale Melms and Andy Duhaid, and they spoke about what it was like to grow up in the village in the 1940s and 50s. It was it was quite entertaining. Had a lot of people come up afterwards and say, what a great program. So next month and this month already, in October, we have the History of the Hampshire Police Department, and Chief Doug Pan plans to speak. I plan to say a few words about some things that I recall from my dad's stories when he was the chief of police years ago, but you're all welcome to attend that. That is later this month, I think it's October 24. So I wanted to touch bases and just review some of the goals that we've revisited that we intend to do and focus on this year, this school year, I'll call it. Our membership drive has already increased since the beginning of this school year. I'd say we've probably got six to seven additional members. We're looking to grow that to a total of 20 by the end of the year. That's the goal for membership. Next is technology, the website development, as well as archiving all of the prior interviews, the senior interviews that we've conducted so far, and all the programs that we posted. They were saved on a series of different computers and tablets and cameras, and there became a concern that they were getting difficult to keep track of. So we've been able to centralize those all on the one petabyte hard drive device, as well as to have them all saved on DVDs and flash drives individually. They're going to be placed in a fire safe, and then ultimately with the development of the website, we hope to have them all available on the website so you can just click on it chronologically, like like the village board minutes or meetings. So that's our update for technology for this next year. Next is fundraising. We organized and plan to introduce a point set of sale just before the holidays. In fact, those flyers will be coming out, I think, later this month. We're trying to figure out the best way to distribute those, if there's a way to do it, along with the Hampshire water mills and the newsletter, whether it's incorporated within the newsletter or a supplier attached to it, yet to be determined, but that's the direction we're hoping to go. So we appreciate the village's support and allowing us to do that. If that's something that we can work through and get accomplished together, that would be great. One of the other fundraiser goals we have this year is the point set of sale I mentioned, and at the end of the year, we're going to have a sock hop dance hosted at James Motors in the showroom. More to come about that. I think it's in June of next year. It's on our schedule for this year, though, as the last program. There'll be a program before and a dance afterwards. I have another announcement. Recently, we had a Hampshire High School graduate and former resident of Hampshire offer anonymously a $10,000 donation if the Historical Society can come up with matching funds. So far, that's off to a great start. I would say we're up to, I think, close to $3,000 in donations, matching donations. The donor wanted to do it incrementally. He wrote us a check for 5,000. He said, if you get that matched, I'll send you the other five. So we're doing it in baby steps, but we're off to a great start between membership, the technology, and our fundraising efforts. So it's it's an exciting year. One of the other things that we added as a goal for this year, it wasn't on, but it's something that's become very evident, and that is establishing an archives committee within the Historical Society. We spent some time upstairs going through the old village hall upstairs, and we're all the documents, papers, newspapers, photographs, articles, scrapbooks. It's overwhelming, to say the least. So we recognize the need to appoint a number of people to an archives committee to focus on just that, archiving, cataloging, determine what we want to keep, what should be in the museum eventually, and what we don't need. So we appointed a number of people to the committee so far. Coupled with membership, we have a new member who has his PhD in history. He's a Hampshire resident. He went to Hampshire High School. He has agreed to join us and serve on the Archives Committee and offer his background and experience. He's worked at another historical museum. He told me, and I forgot where, goes with the territory, but he's got working experience, I'll say, not only as an instructor at the collegiate level, but also in archiving and documenting historical artifacts. So I can't wait to get started on this. It's been needed to be done for quite a while, and it'll be a busy year. Speaking of which, I'm a big one on show and tell. I have to show you all this photograph that was taken out in front of the village hall in 1961. Can I approach you and ask you to take a peek at that? Just pass it down so we can see it. What it represents is dedication ceremony where Nikor Gas donated the gas lights that are currently on the front of the village hall. It was donated in 1961, and you'll see over on the right beneath the light, there's a brass plaque. I don't know if it's still out there beneath the stucco siding, but it memorialized the donation and the dedication, the fact that the village selected Nikor Gas to be their gas service provider for the village. And that's the photograph of the current village board, the village president, and representatives from Nikor Gas taken in 1961. We're in the process of trying to identify all the trustees, and we'll get that done. When we do, they'll all be they'll be framed in that, and it'll have a dedication. The reason I brought that to you is just because of the village's support, the village board's support in restoring those gas lights and getting them reinstalled on the front of the hall. They look fantastic, and I thank you guys for taking the effort to do that and support that project, so.
So we should we should dress up in old garb and recreate that photo?
Yeah. Let's do it.
You mean? Mr. Swalwell, I need you to interrupt you just a moment.
Sure.
I want to thank Mr. Swalwell for spending hours and hours restoring those lanterns. Yes, we did our fun to put them in, because it's gas, but he did all the work. So thank you for that.
Yep, absolutely. It was it was it was an easy easy decision, and I'm glad President Reed during last year's downtown streetscape reconstruction pulled me aside, pointed the lights out on the front of the hall. He goes, what do you think of those? You know anybody that can fix those? All right.
For as long as I've been around, they've been off, and I just like we never had any light. And so I didn't I had heard rumblings of them being gassed over the years, and I'm big into the history, so I work at the village hall. Doesn't look like it did when it was the fire department, because this used to be the fire department. But we were able to find some old photographs of the village hall from the 60s or 70s, and so that's why we have the block letters and the sign up in front of it like we do to be kind of period correct.
Anyway, I thought this was just kind of neat. 1961. And the gentleman on the ladder is our former village mayor, Howard Rungy. Yeah, we were able to identify most of Ron Fredericks, and Ray Junior Mayard is in there, and the rest of them have yet to be determined, but that was all I had with respect to the Hampshire Township Historical Society. I wanted to say a few brief words about the Beautification Committee and the upcoming Beautification Committee meeting, which will be Monday. We are visiting to tackle and revisit the village's sign ordinance with respect to the building signage specifically in the downtown footprint of the properties that are eligible for the facade grant program, not the properties out at the truck stop, not on 72, just those within that footprint. We want to make sure, or at least present to the beautifica- the business development, and then, of course, to the village board, their consideration of maybe some different guidelines with respect to the signage on the front of the buildings, lit versus not lit, surface mount versus perpendicular. Two perpendicular signs that are out there now are Christina's Michelle's Moussalon, the copper barrel, and the third, and soon to be up, is Melly's Gaming Cafe. They're all going to be perpendicular.
You've got the one in front of our building.
And you've got the that's right, the village hall. Yeah, and we've got four up, or three up, four to be soon to be four. So that's the topic of discussion on our agenda for Monday, and then we have two applications for beautification grant grants. The first is basically the windows, the bulk of the windows in the cave. They're all on the second floor. They had presented an application earlier in the year, which was there was a request for them to produce more information and a further discussion about the type of windows, the style of the windows, and how many windows, and that's now since come back. We're going to hear that grant application on Monday, and I'm hopeful to in turn present that to the Business Development Commission on Wednesday, if it's that one, whenever the next meeting is, that Wednesday or the following week. The second grant, which was received today, which I'm going to promptly get on, review, and contact Roger Larson, is for Roger's building next door, the it's Farmer's Insurance Agency, and he wanted to do some exterior work to the siding and to the front entrance, including converting from to stone front, a masonry front, part of it anyway. But those are the two grants that we'll be hearing on Monday, in addition to revising or recommending a revision to the village's sign ordinance. So that was all I wanted to cover with you folks tonight. Does it generate any questions for anyone that I can try and answer? Okay?
Appreciate your time and dedication. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
That's that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Stephanie Rath.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I apologize for my nerves. Public speaking is not my thing. So I'm Stephanie Rath. I currently reside on Prairie and Edgewood right now, and I was just hoping that I could bring to your attention the situation of pickup and drop off right there onto Williger and Prairie. We currently don't have a sidewalk on Prairie, which is fine. It's an older part of town. However, cars, in my opinion, like to avoid pickup and drop off line at the elementary school here, and they're parking on Prairie on both sides of the street. On going to school is not as bad, because we have that 15 minutes where the parents kind of drop them off at the corner, and they walk there. So it's not as bad for our children to walk to school. We have probably have a dozen families that live on Edgewood and Prairie that have to walk down Prairie to get to the school, because we can't use the sidewalk down Edgewood, because that's their drop off lane. So going to school is not as bad, but coming home from school is horrendous and, in my opinion, very unsafe, because we've got cars parking on both sides of Prairie, right there where Prairie and To Williger are, and it's to the point that they're whipping out in front of us as we're trying to walk down the street to get to our houses. I have a picture of, if I'm allowed to show you guys, from this week on Tuesday, where the family behind me almost got hit. I don't know. I'm sorry, guys. I just wanted to time out on you. So there's To Williger here and Old Prairie here, so they're on both sides, and then we have to come around the cars to go down Prairie, and as you can see, they pull right out. They don't look and wait for us at all. So.
The grade school is going to get worse, because they use the gravel parking lot of Park District, and they park in the grass, and that's about the end, so a telephone pulls up to block them, because they're wrecking the grass. We can't move it anymore.
Let me know if it times out on you on the screen. I.
It's going to get worse.
I I'm concerned, because it's to the point when winter starts, I can't just pick my kids up and throw them into the grass on either side. You can't. You have no choice but to go down the middle of the street, and those cars are just whipping out. They're not looking, because they're in a hurry to try to beat the pickup line to get out to Williger and Edgewood. And then the poor kid that I own, I have I stop on the corner of Prairie and Edgewood, but we have probably five families that have to cross Edgewood to get to the sidewalk to get down their houses, down Edgewood, that they're NASCAR-ing up and down Edgewood. They can't get across that intersection. So I was just hoping to bring that to your attention for the very unsafe situation that our children are in. I don't know if we can maybe talk about putting homes up like we do in Edgewood for the middle school for pickup to block that portion off, so we can at least get there safely, or if we get a patrol car, or they're welcome to sit in my driveway and help us. We couldn't really help, because it's getting worse and worse and worse every week, every season. It's just getting to the point where I don't even want to take my kid to school, and I don't want to put him in a car to drive 30 feet to drop him off at school, so.
Mr. Rath, we've been looking into that the last couple of weeks, and I'll give you a call tomorrow, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Should we allow parking on both sides of Prairie?
Yeah, right now, that's something we're looking into. Just had a call earlier this week.
Years ago, on Edgewood, running the high school, Edgewood, and I think Panama, Highland, when the high school was here, we had no, we had, we just moved it not too long ago, but like no daytime parking allowed between certain hours or something like that.
That's what we're looking into now. One of the other problems we're having is actually a lot of walkers are also actually walking in the street on both sides of Prairie.
Yeah.
You probably see that yourself, so that's a problem, too.
We have no, like, I I live right there, so we have no choice, because half the time you've got a bunch of cars that cut you off, so then you move over to this side, because they're piling up, and then you start to walk there, and they just they come right up and park in front of you here, so you have no choice. It's either the middle of the road, or you have to zigzag from side to side to side.
I'm going to touch a bit of principles, so we'll talk tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Amy Coronel.
Hi. Sorry, hi. Missed it. Little fast, a little slow. I'm just trying. Okay, so I didn't say, Coronel, I live in Hampshire for more than six years already. My son, who now is in the Air Force, graduated in this college. I just want to take a time and say thank you to our president, Mike Reed, who approached me and talked to me about this Hispanic community in this beautiful town. The same thing, I want to say thanks to the lieutenant, whom it yesterday, to the police department, same thing. Thank you for support our community. I know we are a small, a few, well, not that small, but our Hispanic people are giving a lot to this community, and now we feel that you guys are more open. And I just want to take the time to say that we are happy to be part of this community and that we are happy that you guys listen us now and forth. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Next, before you, you have the meeting minutes from September 21st, 2023. That meeting did recess in 2022, or the time's on the 22nd, but the meetings are there. Please review them at this time.
Absolutely.
First of all, I want to say to Josh, wow, the fact that he put all these minutes together with seven hours' worth of a meeting, and it's not that thick. I commend him for that. It was amazing. There are just a couple little things that, just minor. Page five, the top matters on the agenda tonight, just to pull up tonight, because it's it's a summary, anyway, of it minutes. And then at the bottom of page five, after the board reconvened at 10:17, I just I felt it needed to be a little bit, a little bit more of an explanation as the whole 11:53 and the 2020, the date of the 21st and 22nd. So I thought something that, you know, I wanted to put President Reed noted that pursuant to law, or something specific in there with the reason why the board needs to recess and reconvene after midnight, and I just kind of clarified, comma, the end of the day of the scheduled meeting, comma, attorney does not leave note of the agenda will not change. Just something in there, because otherwise if the board needs to recess and reconvene after midnight, why? So I just thought it should be clarified someplace in there.
We got any legalese we can throw in there? No, I think, no, trustees' legalese is great, yeah. No, I think it's great, but what did we put in there? You just gave us the legalese. I think your legalese is fine, yeah. Pursuant to law? Yeah, or in accordance with law, pursuant to law. Okay. Lawyers are good with synonyms.
So and that's it. Those are my only corrections.
I just, I thought we adjourned at 1:42, but I'm not going to. I'll wait a minute. I'm going to tell everybody 1:42 for the two weeks. I think that's a rounding error. I just wanted to. Yep, I wish I'm not bashing on the. The agenda was there from 9:00. I think it's in there. Oh, okay, I missed that. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Additional, yeah. So other than the changes that we just spoke about with accordance to law and that one statement, and the other change, I obtain a motion to approve the minutes for the changes presented by trustee Paulus Green. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clark, can you call openly?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Cough?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus, 39. And Mr. Spoder?
Great. So the motion, chances is 5-0, 5-0. Right? Yeah, 5-0. Perfect. All right. Next, we have a couple of proclamations. If you remember, last year, this mayor came and visited us and spoke about metastatic breast cancer, and so last year, we made the Spirit Saint proclamation. In the interest of time, I'm only going to do what I did last year, which is read the past acts here. It says, whereas breast cancer is the most common type of cancer among women in the world, the second leading cause of cancer of cancer death among the women in the United States, with more than one in eight women and one in 833 men being diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetimes, with an estimated 300,000, 300, 500, 300,059 Americans will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in 2023. It says metastatic breast cancer occurs when the breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including bones, lungs, liver, brain, and has an average life expectancy of 24 to 36 months, with approximately 30% stage 0 to 3 breast cancers returning as stage 4 regardless of early detection, and an estimated 43,700 Americans dying from breast cancer in 2023, equal to 115 women and men per day, with 90%, 98% due to metastatic breast cancer. So this campaign is called Light Up MBC. It happens every October 13th to illuminate 115 landmarks in the metastatic colors of teal, pink, and green throughout the world, bringing awareness to the disease, to honor and honor the daily number of 115 lives lost per day. So again, that's October 13th, 2023. We don't have a meeting before then, so that's why I'm proclaiming October 13th, 2023, as metastatic breast cancer awareness day in the village. Also, we have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. As Ms. Cornell just spoke, she reached out a couple weeks ago, when we met for coffee at Hampshire Social, and spoke at great length about the different contributions that our Hispanic members of our community make to our community overall, and finding different ways for us to be more involved with that side of the community, that side of the community trying to be more involved with us. We talked about a bunch of things today, actually, and I think that caused some confusion about what we were actually planning tonight, because there were different ideas about about things, and we hope to work together over the next year to make it even better for next month, or next year, rather. So Hispanic Heritage Month began as Hispanic Heritage Week assigned into legislation into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson in 1968, and in 1988, the commemorative week was expanded into month, September 15th, October 15th, by signed legislation by President Ronald Reagan. September 15th was chosen as a starting point for the commemoration, because it was the anniversary of the Cry of the Horus, early early morning of 16th September, 1810, which marked the start of the Mexican War of Independence, and thus resulted in independence for the new Spain colony, now Mexico. Guatemala, Belize, El Salvador, Costa Rica, Honduras, and Nicaragua in 1821. And whereas many Hispanic people came to this country as immigrants and have fought for state and national initiatives, providing pathways for citizenships and protecting rights, and whereas throughout the history of the United States, members of the Hispanic community have helped serve, shaped the local, social, political, and economic landscape of this country and our community, and whereas throughout the year, and especially during Hispanic Heritage Month, Americans embrace, honor, and celebrate the Hispanic community and their traditions and contributions. The Village of Hampshire is committed to recognizing the Hispanic culture and heritage as an important part of its inclusive community, and therefore, I, Mike Reed, Jr., president of the Village of Hampshire, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month and in the Village of Hampshire. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I'm going to assign this. Thank you for being a part of our community. We look forward to working closely together in the future. Okay. Now for the fun stuff. Mr. Hedges, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would ask for your consideration of an ordinance, meaning village code chapter six, zoning regarding the keeping of chickens in the village. Let me just mention that the next three items, I'll call it bracketed. You have in your packet and agenda supplement, Mr. Ray, so I'm wanting to answer questions with the very nice village logo behind him. That might have something to do with the meeting conversation we had here. So and also, after Mr. Ray speaks, any questions you have about the ordinance is, of course, asked Mr. himself. So with that, Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one quick note. The village board had previously had kind of a consensus, if you will, to increase the number of allowable hens from four to eight. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered that for quite a lengthy discussion and decided ultimately that rather than have that provision come through a public hearing and a zoning amendment each time it wants to be, the board wants to change it to instead just change the code to allow the board to make a motion and amend it whenever you would all like, similar to the licenses. So the ordinance is drafted with that style of language, where you would then, as you'll see on the agenda, make a motion to set the number of hens, and then that could be changed at any meeting moving forward?
I had a couple of conversations with Chairman Barack about that, and it was the deliberation and the ordinance was drafted in that matter, because, again, they didn't really feel the number of birds impacted the zoning at all, and so they felt it was outside of their purview. So the tax amended portion of it, you know, changing the zoning restrictions for the height and that kind of stuff was stuff that they would weigh in, but the number of birds in Chairman Barack's speech didn't really concern the zoning at all. Right, I know. So as you will see in front of you, it's kind of the exact same thing that we talked about at the board level before we went to zoning, as we raised it from six foot to seven foot tall, because then that would allow people to buy pre-made runs and hoops, increasing the number from four to eight, because of all the reasons we spoke about at the board meeting, less board meeting, and then modifying the provision to keep chickens allow, to keep chickens inside until fully feathered. And it doesn't mean that they're going to be moving into your home and staying there. It's just that they need feathers to stay warm. Are there any questions about the proposed ordinance or the process? Thank you, Mr. Ray. I like the background.
Thank you.
Daddy.
I have a question on ordinance page. Seven of the ordinance 20th, I think, at the top, when it's talking about the screened in area. So it talks about the fact that they will be effectively screened to six feet. That's the existing ordinance. The screening has to be a minimum of six feet tall, but we've raised the run height to seven feet, so should we be raising the screening to the maximum height of where a run would be? Otherwise, you can end up with a foot over what the screening is. If the if the objective of screening is to hide it from neighbors, and you can have them a foot higher than what your screening is, or is you beating your objective?
You want to change that, because you think they might fly over that foot?
Nope. Just told you.
I hope they're not flying out of an enclosed area anyway. I hope they're not flying out of an enclosed area anyway. My point is that the screening was meant to hide them from neighbors. We have now increased one height without increasing the others. My question is, should both be?
I see what you're saying. Well, can we change it from at least six feet to no more than seven? Can I give you the flexibility?
Because what if I are provided it goes up 15 feet to one max? I'm just saying, should we say at least seven feet?
And that was part of the, Mr. Sheriff, that was part of the consideration that's at least six feet. So it could go to seven. And from an economic perspective, you keep it all at seven. But we can change it. I mean, that is not.
I'm just bringing up for discussion.
Yeah.
It just seemed like we had mismatches.
No, it, it, there is a foot discrepancy and it did say at least. And also the, I mean, technically the zoning board did not comment on that. Like, so we did not address it. Honestly, I think.
I was just gonna say, the average person is under six foot. So if it's a neighbor issue, if they are standing in their yard as they're looking, they're not going to be able to see over the six foot screening around the pan, even for the sun. Because.
The, the whole, the whole reasoning in changing the ordinance for the coop itself was because the pre-made coops seem to be taller.
That part I understand.
And so, and I, I fear with, I fear with changing the screening requirements, a lot of the pre-made panels that you would buy, they come in standard, you know, three, six, or, you know, three, four, six height, I think if I was right, that's just example. Or then you go to eight. So then if somebody's not handy and they buy a pre-made panel of any type of fencing, they would have to cut that down because they can't put up an eight foot panel for this purpose. Well, I guess they could. They could have put up a five one. They could have put on, it's at least six. And that's why we thought seven would be covering.
Yeah, I just was. Yeah, nobody has a problem with it.
There is a inconsistency in the numbers. I mean, if you want, we can raise it to seven unless there are any.
I would think you would raise cost. In a way that we might be.
Trustee Phil, do you give a six or a seven?
I don't really care. Early on, but the people that got six foot now, they're not gonna be a lab foot. Without ripping the whole thing down and redoing it. So it's gonna be really expensive. How about any new licenses, seven foot and eventually? I don't like it.
As you said, nobody really minds on the board just speaking. It's just breaking it up just. We talked a lot about.
I mean, particularly if he flies out that one foot, he gets up six foot. And let him run for a while.
So do you want to say the other topics about the ordinances or the proposed changes?
Yes. I just want for a process though. So then we're gonna, we're gonna approve this then, and then we're gonna make a separate motion then on the hens, the numbers, and a separate motion then. So am I understanding?
Correct. Because the new ordinance would give us the authority to set the number of birds. Whereas before it was set by the ordinance.
Okay, because there was nothing else in the packet. That's why I wasn't sure if we were doing that. Thank you.
Are you guys good with it? I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 23-19, an ordinance amending the Village Code for Chapter Six zoning regulations regarding the keeping of chickens in the village. I have a first and I have a second. Any other questions, comments, or discussions? Ms. Clark, can you call the vote please?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mr. or Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's talk about ends. Hey, so we kind of, we understood that the request was made. And we seem to have a compromise with the group to go with eight for various reasons. Is there any other discussion about this?
I just, I'm still opposed to it, as I was before. I don't, I'm not comfortable doubling it. I think we're still in a phase where we're kind of figuring out to do with it. And I understand some of the reasons that people wanted to do it, but I just, if I had four hens next to me and all of a sudden it goes to eight because the ordinance changed, I'd be. I would be.
Understood. Any other comments?
How many requests have we got for hen, more than four hens?
I don't know that we've gotten numbers, if you will. I know that I've gotten 10 people. And of the 10 people, there were several people that, of the, of the 10, I would say nine of the 10 said that they want the flexibility, if not, if not for the reason to, it's easier to add in pairs. It was a comment that I got and I'm not chicken expert unless it's got deep red marks on it. So I really can't, I really can't speak to it other than that. Other than that, they say that they, if they have three and one gets sick and they need to add another one, it's easier to add two than, than it is to add one. That's where the term packing order comes from. So there was, so there was a feeling with the group that there are some that are completely fine right now at four and will not be going to five or eight or whatever. But if they lose one, they will be going to five because it's easier than going just to four. And that, that was the reason. I think, I think that the program has shown that the people that have licenses now are fairly, like, are very responsible, right? And we haven't had any formal complaints about any of the coops being out of place or not kept up with, or chickens causing a problem in the village. And again, I'm not, I'm not a chicken expert, but those were the reasons. Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion setting the number of allowable hens to eight pursuant to the Village Code, section six dash 20 dash one, C, one.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any other comments or discussion? Ms. Clark, can you call the vote please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
No.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, our last chicken agenda item tonight will be to raise the number of licenses from 10 to 15. We have had a lot, I wouldn't say a lot, but we've had several, a, a pretty regular interest in more people getting chickens within the village. And so this board agreed that 15 seemed to be the right number to go with for the next year. And so again, these are two numbers that now we are allowed to set at the village board level. I just want to be clear. So any discussions, comments, or questions about that?
I can ask for, how many do we have that are being used right now?
Mr. Ray?
All, all 10 license, all 10 licenses are issued. I believe eight out of 10 have gotten building permits for their coops and pens.
Okay, and those expire then if they don't use them the next year and they don't re get another one?
They have the opportu, they have the opportunity to apply first, a month ahead of everybody again, but we're not forcing them to not get it again, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, well, because I'm just trying to figure out if, if they didn't get the hens and the chickens when they had the license, you know.
I'll have to apply for another license so they can apply along with everybody else.
Okay, and this, so, all right. And, and just out of curiosity, have other people expressed interest then? They have.
Yeah. It's pretty regular and, and so much so that, I mean, we've had people that know that all 10 licenses are gone. And somehow or another, maybe it's just because it's a small town, know that there are not 10 coops erected around town. And then they go, well, if they're not using it, can you pull a gas so I can, so I can use it? Yeah. Not.
Licenses are good for a year.
You know, so.
They expire.
Yeah.
And not just chicken license, any, any.
When does this begin then? I mean, this license, so we approve the numbers this time? And then is it the first of the year or?
Today, tomorrow.
As of tomorrow. Okay.
And then it would remain in effect until we change it?
But the request for new licenses, when did that, I mean, when did we issue the first one? Because if they're for one year.
So we started this process, I think it was July 1, I think that we issued licenses originally. So we'd have to figure out whether or not we prorate them till the end of the year, you know? So like if somebody wants a license and they get it tomorrow, it would go to the, they would be prorated to the renewal rate like we do with everything else. And then they would have to apply again on July 1 and then just how.
Okay, I think that would be smart because otherwise you're gonna have staggering times and starts and.
I think we've done, we've done everything July 1st with this program.
So we can do it similar to legal licenses where we start effectively and then it goes to the calendar.
Okay, then so, yeah, absolutely.
Do we need to put that in the motion?
No, we can handle that as well.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussion? I will entertain a motion to raise the license, number of licenses to 15 for 10 pursuant to Village Code, section six dash 20 dash B, one.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clark, can you call the vote please?
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we would now ask your consideration of a motion to approve a letter of credit reduction from $3,850,809 to $1,150,000, $15,000, excuse me, $202.24 for public improvements in the Hampshire Logistics Park. You have a letter from Mr. Paulson in your packet as well as the detailed reductions. And they would appreciate this. This is a project that's going very smoothly. However, they do not have any tenants in the park.
Any questions for Mr. Paulson or Mr. Hedges or Mr. Sal?
This is the project on the east side of 20, correct?
Yeah, I kind of call it the northeast side, on the tollway side.
Yeah.
Between the tollway and.
They've started paving in there already because the last time I drove by, they look like they're just moving dirt.
They're grading, but they're getting close to paving.
Because this report that they're knocking stuff off for has paving in the park.
Tim, can you address that?
Uh, yeah. Let me see.
So on page, what is this, 27 of the packet, the first page of their breakdown at the very top is a whole section of $340,850 towards pavement.
Right. And there, none of that is completed as, at the time they submitted this paperwork.
It says 0%.
It's showing 0% complete.
So that's part of the $1 million that is being held back.
Yes.
Or a million and change. Okay.
They have actually, within the last week, put the pave the binder course out there. But they submitted this in early September, not in time for the first meeting. And the second meeting was kind of full, so that's why it's coming to you now.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the letter of credit reduction for public improvements in the Hampshire 90 Logistics Park.
So what?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Sorry, one more question. If I'm reading this, Mr. Paulson correctly, the left side where I was just saying like what the costs were aligned to and what they have. It says the bond amount total for the project is the 3.85 million, correct?
Right, correct.
And the overall subtotal on the right side is 892,000. That's for the work that has been done, correct? And then the bond amounts, 125% of that, which would be 1.1 million, correct?
Uh, the subtotal on the, on the far right is the subtotal of the remaining items.
The, the heading is on the first page, but it doesn't extend to the second page.
Okay, thank you. It gets confusing when you say 90% of something and then show a price, but it's actually 10% of 90%. Okay, thank you.
Right, there's only 90% complete and then the cost that's left is 10% of the cost. Yeah, I could see that being confusing.
All right, so I have a first and a second. Any other comments or discussion? Ms. Stew, can you call the vote?
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe? Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would ask your consideration of a motion to approve final payment of the Kane County Excavating, to Kane County Excavating in the amount of $23,964, approximately 80, excuse me, for work completed on the connection water main project totaling $958,559.84. This is approximately, approximately $8,100, 100 bid. This project was managed extremely well, finished on time, under, under budget by, by a local company, Kane County Excavating. So we appreciate your consideration.
Long time coming.
It was, but it was very smooth.
When does the warranty expire?
Well, this is the warranty. This is our one year holdback, so I have to.
Okay.
And that included the connection to the P R V ballot.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve final payment to Kane County Excavating.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clark, can you call the vote please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Anything, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Coast?
Yes, sir.
Streets report.
I have no, uh, we have a meeting Saturday, this coming Saturday. So we don't.
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday. Next Saturday.
He's so excited about it. He wishes it was this Saturday.
I have nothing to report.
Uh, we have, we have the building report in here, as you see. Lots of permits issued in September are over the average for the month. They're over the average most years in the past.
We, we, we did 50 permits last month and we did 60 a year until 2022. Almost every year. We're on pace to do about 350 this year. And I would like to say this officially and publicly. While this growth is accelerating right now, we have another neighborhood we expect to open up in the, in the spring. I believe it's being managed very well. Thanks to Safeville and E D I, who are both scalable house source services, adding people and adding inspectors as needed. While we were Safeville's second customer in Illinois, they're, they're doing very well in the state and, and they've done a great job. So you know that several controlled managed facilities.
Several municipalities made them come. So Burlington, I believe, is using them. I think.
Highway.
Overseas as well.
Some of them just on specific roles, but we're, I think we're only one of three that are using community, or the online digital version, which is really what I think is the big deal.
One question, and maybe Josh can answer it. You know, it's budget chairman, but I don't memorize it. The number of permits and what we've brought in, is that in par with what we had budgeted for? Or are we just exceeding budgets?
I, I don't know the budget, I don't know the budget number, but it's definitely exceeding what we had budgeted. We didn't plan on anywhere near 300 plus housing permits.
That's a significant amount more money coming in, so, okay.
Yeah, I would just like to add one thing that I don't see in the notes I make, but I'm gonna bring up something under new business. And I'd like to address this now. Our public use fee, I believe it's about $1,500 per home. We had budgeted for $150,000 this year, $167,000 actually. We had a fund balance of about $388,000. That was the, the last audit, which was year 2022. We had 165 fees paid last year in the entire fiscal year. That's what we budgeted this year. We've already collected 167 in the first quarter. So we'll probably end up with four times our budget in that public use fund, which will bring us to a balance, well, right now the balance is about $780,000. And I'll be addressing something in new business on that same page. Trustee Kelly, when Rory's available, we'll begin, begin talking about. Those funds are available for, um, street department uses other than roads, including roads, but also uses.
You mean like crack filling and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Or building?
Maybe a place to put a garage, you know, a place to put a truck or something like that.
That's just what we call a tease.
Yes.
Right in the business. So stay tuned for more and new business. Um, we have, so there's no questions about the streets report or the building report. You have the accounts payable for you. The amount is $142,376.16. Does anyone have any questions? We're gonna do our best tonight because Ms. Lions is here. And, but we do have the box, so we pull the voices. We haven't done that in a while. Give us a reason to go in the box.
Just a question, just out of curiosity. Page 42 for help of graphics, it's the newsletter fees. Just a question, just curiosity, page forty-two for help of graphics, it's the newsletter fees, and I was just curious why we're doing May's, July's and September's, why they haven't been paid already?
Actually, their invoices were going to the wrong email address, and we didn't get them too recently.
Ah, okay, I just want to make sure we weren't holding them for some reason, then, alright, I'm glad they got this.
They didn't call and ask for it, or whatever.
Any other questions?
Yeah, right below the, what's Carboy? Our, on page forty-two, second from the bottom.
Can't answer it, it sounds like something that hopefully police department related.
Oh, okay.
I can't, I really don't.
Okay.
Like, look, it's from Amazon, I'm sure we could just look it up, it's a hundred seventy-five miles.
No, I'm just curious, it's not going to set the world on fire.
Uh, they mentioned Amazon, I don't.
Let's see.
Laura, you have one other?
Okay, um, and I, I mentioned it to Trusty Cole today, uh, before the meeting, but it's, um, page fifty, the traffic control and protections. Uh, it said street name signs, and it's not so much of the matter of the money, I just was curious if they're replacing old ones, or if some have been stolen and replaced them altogether, or if they were upgrading or fixing those, if they're in bad shape.
A, a little of all those things, like, we have accidents occasionally where they get damaged, there was one missing at the corner of Kelly and, uh...
Something over there.
Yeah.
I mean, the senators missing.
Um, there was one missing there, and one of the residents asked us about it, so they put one up just a couple of weeks ago, and we do cover it once, but we don't, we're not replacing them, because they're changing styles or anything, they're just, you know, they get damaged or they're missing.
Okay, because, you know, just curious, because in the area by me, right off of Old Mill, there's those just really small little townhouse streets over there, and I think it's Bruce Lane that the entire one side of the signs were wiped.
Yeah, if we know about it, we can do that.
Pardon? Page, page, okay, it's page.
Page and.
Page, page and Old Mill.
Okay.
And then possibly Bruce, but, I mean, I just think those little signs that were up and down by where those townhouses were on both the east and west side of Warner are worth at least double checking, because I, I know I've had to walk around to see what street it was, because I couldn't tell and it was on the other side.
That would be a great use of the.
I was just going to say, we have an app that somebody can take a picture with and then send it right to the.
Just here, I mean, I wouldn't have been thinking about it, except for the fact that I saw it on the accounts payable, and it made me think, so I was just curious, and if the village was so, you know, ahead of things that they had out, replaced it before I even asked.
They don't, they don't, I don't think they cruise a town on little streets too regularly, and look for trees, but, but call it in, they'll.
Yeah, I would, I would.
They'll, they'll be out there tomorrow.
You see, after, take a picture.
Okay.
Sends a GPS location where you take a picture, too. So really, it's pretty cool.
Can we pull the receipt for the Carboy, just because everything I'm finding on Amazon.
Are they jobs?
Yeah, it's a water job, but I, I'm not sure where, so I'll look into it.
Yes.
Oh, man, hold on, we've never, I've never, I've never been able to open the box.
Sorry.
Okay, usually they're used for, like, home brewing.
That's why I. I was like, what?
They're not running, they're not running the liquor thing out of frickin' the door.
There's a still. Great, but the only thing that would be at that price level, look like it would be for, like.
Huh, Amazon invoices, here we go, here we go, oh, this is so exciting, you're going.
Sorry, folks, the name.
Make sure this is in the minute spirit clear.
Yeah, this is, uh, oh, this is it, this is it, so they ordered one colleague, opaline carboy with spigot, twenty liters.
Okay.
That doesn't answer your question.
No, but, oh, but that's what it is, I think they're, they're making wine and.
It's, no, it's, it's for snow removal, it's not.
Would that be for the.
I like the presents.
Yes, it's for pre-treat.
Okay, there we go.
Bee juice, not bean oil.
Thank you.
Bright color.
Yeah.
Look at that, see?
Right, I'm sorry, I got it, right?
I have, I have one question on page forty-four, uh, it has nothing to do with the price, I would just like to know philosophically what this is for. Uh, school district three hundred board meeting, two charges, are we being charged twice for this school district?
If you look at the date, I can tell you what it is.
Rent.
It's rent.
So we got charged rent by district three hundred to utilize their facility?
A hundred percent, a hundred percent.
And that'll be paid by the developer.
I, I, I'm not worried about who's paying, I'm worried that we have a local organization that we usually try to partner with who charges us rent.
And they were going, and they were going to do that, and I said, absolutely not.
It still did.
I, no, no.
Actually, the first two meetings, they did waive it, because I didn't tell them not to, but I didn't know if you.
And I said, absolutely not, you charge us for this, because your people have to be here to, uh, to open and close and all this stuff, and the developer pays for it, so they charge.
Hundred and eighteen bucks is cheap, your mechanic is still a engineer, that way it's.
A thousand percent.
But we work with local organizations, and so it sounds like they were willing to do that, but we told them not to, so that's.
It was a thousand.
That answers my philosophical.
A thousand percent, and if we needed that building for any reason, if we needed to have a meeting for one of our reasons that wasn't for a potential development, they would let us go proud.
Actually, I'd rather they reimburse us for my time on school, trying to make those reservations, because it's worth somewhere. Takes about an hour, you know, to go to.
Is that where it's?
And I've done it all four times to know now, I'm the only one here that configured it, just for the record.
You used to be.
That should be the newest day.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so it sounds like they were going to be good partners, we told them to charge us.
A hundred percent.
Out first, covering.
In fact, normally it takes about two weeks to confirm these appointments, and I was able to call the principal and maybe the secretary.
I'm good with that, I was just hoping they were being good partners.
A thousand percent.
It's great to hear.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of a hundred forty-two thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and sixteen cents. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clark?
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Collins, Trudy?
Aye.
Ms. Spoder?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Questions, comments, five zero.
Awesome. Alright, next we have Mr. Kelly and his fantastic BDC report.
BDC will be meeting next Wednesday, same time, same place, new topics. See you there, any questions?
Mr. Cole?
I'm going to refer my public works to new business.
The suspense, any other village board committee reports they'd like to have, or should we just go right to new business?
No, the one that's not on here, I will mention, because we do have a budget, okay, I'll be reaching out to Mr. Hedges and Rory soon to start the process, like, uh, at least the initial. Gathering of information, because that would compacts the periods.
New business, Mr. Hedges?
Hi, um, so Mr. Cole has been alluding to this, and I did too, um, as you all know, we're planning a public works garage, uh, we don't have funds to pay for it yet, so this year we're, we're, um, the planning process going very smoothly, though, we've met with four contractors now, and we'll meet, well, with our third architect today, and we'll meet with another one tomorrow. And probably in the next thirty days, I'll be coming to you, uh, with a recommendation on an architect upfront, who will help us do a space needs analysis. Uh, the one we met with today, it was almost a three-hour meeting, went really well, dug really into the needs that Dave and Bill had that we met with us today. Um, so we'll be coming back to you on that soon. In the meantime, we stumbled onto a really good opportunity, uh, there's a building available in town, I prefer not to say exactly where yet, because we, we don't have, not able to tie it up at all. There's a building in town that, uh, would be, is available for rent, and would get us through this winter, and would allow us to keep our, our plowing crew, uh, excuse me, all of our plow equipment at this facility. There's an office there, there's a kitchen there, we can do all our plowing up there, there's also outdoor storage for salt, um, so we can move everything up there for just one year. So what I'd like to do is just ask if the board is in general consensus, if I'm able to go back and negotiate a lease, that we can come back to you in, in two weeks or, or later. Uh, right now, the owner of the property is willing to hold it for us, he would just like some indication if we're interested or not by tomorrow.
All the trucks would be inside.
And it's a heated shop, and they have water, and they can do everything that they need to do on the inside in a heated space, instead of doing it outside on the ice, in the cold. The trucks would start, we wouldn't have to leave them run like we did last winter when it got really cold.
And I can tell you that the rent right now, uh, they ask prices around five thousand dollars a month, I think we'll do a little bit better than that. So, no, no reason to vote or anything tonight, but if anybody has any major objections, then, uh, please let me know, otherwise I'll, I'll bring that back to you in either two or four weeks, probably.
I could just ask, not about the lease itself, but, I mean, what would we do with the other building then, would we just be out of it?
No, actually, the other, the other building is so overcrowded right now that we'll still be really crowded over there.
We're renting, we're renting buildings all over town for all of our other equipment. So, uh, we, no, that'll, that'll still be full, but it won't be jam-packed with trucks and trucks outside.
Is there an opportunity to maybe rent one less building all over town?
Uh, oh, yes, I think we're definitely solidified.
Like, we can sound like, and that kind of stuff?
And we expect that, if everything goes well, they have a new building by this time next year, so that that'll carry us until the next, until the new building.
Is the rent of these buildings then planned for then?
No, that's, that's why I mentioned it earlier, it would come out of this public use fee that we received.
Okay.
And that's the, the one that's running about, uh, almost four hundred thousand over budget at the current pace. Now, the risk that Rory asked me to remind you all, is that if this housing boom crashes immediately, then what we have so far is, you know, we've already received the budget amount, um, and I can tell you there's enough permits out there right now, and nobody's stopping tomorrow, it's going to go through at least the end of the year. Um, we're talking about sixty thousand dollars over a year, and they're well over budget in that item.
And public works will come with, uh, build next month, because the little combination backhoe's been sitting outside for all these years. In layman's terms, the motor sucked in half a tank of diesel fuel, so now it's getting towed over to Westside Tractor for an expensive repair.
And that's a great idea.
I think it's a, it could be.
Do we know how much we could estimate saving in renting the little spots over there?
Yeah, but I can certainly, at the next week.
That is a possibility, that we might save some money there.
Yes.
The bigger, the bigger win is to have our crews being able to do the work in, inside instead of outside in the cold, in the ice, and all that kind of stuff, after being in the truck for hours and hours now. I think it's a really, I think it's a big win for our public works department, if we can pull this off.
It's definitely positive, I'm in no way saying, no, don't do it, I'm just curious, like, yes, this is what we want to do, now what do we do, whether it be alternate funding, so we work in C, D, E and F.
We're, we're bringing that back to you with the proposal, sure. And we're not making any commitment, the board will make that final decision.
Okay. Awesome, thank you very much, any other new business tonight?
Uh, I don't like this necessarily, new business, because it was in the streets report, and I did want to just mention, uh, for the homecoming parade, we had that there was road closures. Uh, I don't know if there's actually road closures, and the reason why I'm saying that is I was very thankful that at the end of state, near the railroad tracks, there was a public works truck blocking traffic going southbound. There was nothing blocking traffic going northbound or from the side streets, and I know that because I was able to drive down and wondered why all these people were on the sides, and realized now it's about ten minutes from the start of a parade, and here I am going down State Street, and so I felt really bad, and then was a little concerned because of the number of people on those sides of the street. So my ask is that, I think the parades are great, that we're going to do them, and we had a meeting where we were told that we rerouted a parade, we've done tons of security for parades when it was in regard to concrete. And my, my direct observation is that was not done for this parade, and so my feedback is that as we have community organizations to do this, I would ask that we take the same rigor that we did with concrete with the others, to ensure the safety of those people that are around there.
And we have similar concerns, uh, Jim, would you like to address that at all? I will, but first, uh, uh, the parade did not go the route that we're supposed to take, and that, that was a mistake, and, uh, it will be more closely monitored next time. They, they deviated from the route that was agreed to, and we didn't have enough people there to stop them.
Oh, I was talking, I'm, I'm talking downtown State Street.
I understand.
I'm not talking like where they turn, or where they ended, or how it went, I'm talking right through the heart of their posted route and our suggested.
It was not, it did not go like it should have.
Jefferson wasn't blocked, Washington, I didn't see it blocked, the only thing I saw was the public works gentleman and his truck, and thank goodness he was there to stop that traffic.
Yeah, but you could just go right around.
There was a lot, there was a lot of commitments that were made by the school, I'm just going to call it what it is, that, that didn't end up happening, and by the time it started happening, it was already over. So it was just, it was not.
There's already been an after action report Chief Pan is aware of, and, um, Jim, I don't.
Just for the safety of those people that go to these.
None of us were happy with the outcome.
Yes, it's a thing.
I just wanted to raise it, because I, what I understand, it was a great parade, the windows, I loved, the school decorating, everything, the turnout seemed like tons of people were out there, which was great. I just, when I started driving, I looked at my wife and I thought, uh, I don't think I'm supposed to be here right now.
No.
And then I realized that, okay, let's.
They wanted the parade to be shorter than the parade on the whole route, so they took the shortcut, and actually, I'm concerned.
Okay, so.
So, I mean, yeah, because I thought that is the parade route that every parade is supposed to follow, and that was the, what they've been agreed on, and they just did their own thing.
That is a tough.
Even to the point of going to the middle school in an exit, in a middle school that was having, uh, you know, like, pretty football, what do they call it, junior whips, the junior whips had games going, so the parking lot was full of cars, and they were going in an exit, thank God, public works was out there, because they were able to block traffic from one direction. It just, the whole, it was just.
Hold on, hold on, though, in all fairness, that route was posted on the web days before they even had the parade, it was, there was a match going, that they were going into the middle school.
Yeah, correct, but not the exit, not the exit, they were supposed to go down the entrance.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look back, but it looked like they were going into the middle right off of State Street, which is the exit, so.
So.
That, like, that's not a last-minute change.
It's being addressed to one avenue.
Yeah, you have our, all of our words on there.
Yeah, that part, I would, like I said, that part I was less concerned, it was more of where, like, you have tons of people, and the roads weren't blocked when we said that we blocked it, but I am thankful again for the public works gentleman that was out there, because that was, that was really good to have somebody there, so, thank you to that gentleman.
Um, you have something?
No, I have an announcement, we need to announce this.
Oh, I have one question for you all. Uh, we ask every year, trick-or-treating is, uh, on October thirty-first, um, it's going to be during the week this week, this year. Um, it is a Tuesday, I believe, it is a Tuesday, uh, we recommend hours, we can enforce them, there's no ordinance. Um, typically, we do either three to seven or four to seven, there's some discrepancies as far as when is the right one to recommend, but again, we can only recommend hours, we can't enforce them. So, just a four-year preference, three or four.
What time do the kids get out of school?
So.
Who gets out of work at three o'clock?
Well, the elementary school kids, elementary school kids get out at like two fifteen.
Middle school's three forty.
Yeah, so it's like between, usually between two and four o'clock, kids get out of school.
I would recommend that the three, the kids, they're getting out at two fifty, they've got their costumes on, they're excited.
We recommend that everybody, we tell people, put on their porch lights a few air, I'll give candy and that kind of stuff, if you know, your doorbell rang, you get porch lights off. Again, we can enforce it, there's no ordinance, everybody just looks to us to set hours, so.
I, I would recommend four, just because, how do you get to a home, I mean, there's nobody to give out candy.
You're still going to have school buses driving around.
Exactly, it's, it's like very, very hazardous, because if the little people in their, their costumes are, they're excited and running across the street.
All often, also, when they.
Or any of those people who are picking up their kids, you know.
All often, also, when I get a ticket and say, drink your water. Okay, that's all I needed, that's all I needed to go off of.
Thanks, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I know that everybody's going to hate me for this, but. The discussion, have we ever had a discussion about, we need to, if we can't?
Not going to happen.
Okay. Okay, because it's really hard on schools, where you can't get the kids, you know, they're, okay.
The reason I say it's hard, no.
And the residents.
The, the reason I say hard, no.
Yeah.
We have such a problem getting the word out about anything, and so, and so, like, I don't know how in the world we would be able to communicate, okay, it's the weekend.
I think the kids should all go to school, then I stay jacked up on sugar. Anybody against that?
They already do, so.
I understand, anything.
You know, like, I love Halloween, my husband used to, you know, do all kinds of things, but we can't do that when we have to go to work, and then come home, and, you know, they're already half gone.
We have people that don't read the newsletter, we have people that don't have our app, we have people that don't follow us on Facebook.
You just got to post it on Facebook, it's seven hundred comments, and then everybody goes back to their neighbors.
Yeah, but we also have people who just really want to do it on the holiday.
I understand that.
All states.
But, no, all states do. But, no, all states do it. Yeah.
So, but what I'm saying is, I, I don't, I think it would be a disaster. We had that for the past couple of years, not the past couple of years, but years prior. I mean, how many times did we have like a snowstorm, right? And everybody was all over us to cancel it because.
That was too cold, like.
And like, you know, there's just, it's so hard for us to get that message out there, and then how do we, how do, how do we address that? To the kids that are all psyched up to go, and then all of a sudden they're getting chewed out by a resident because they got their door rang.
They missed it, and it was two days ago.
Yeah.
The Trump or treat is this weekend, so.
Yeah.
That is on the.
The Trump or treat.
Trump or treat.
Yeah, yeah.
Trump or treat.
And that's on the eighth.
Don't ring my phone.
Sunday, so.
Last year, that jury, they estimated a thousand, fifteen hundred.
Yep. I would.
Just like them.
No, I, I agree.
I'm with you.
Get our people home. Do we have a Trump parade advantage?
We will. We give away sugar pants.
Like sugar pants.
So, yeah, so we have plenty of places for people to be at, just, would you like to be there? Bring a couple of bags of candy, come hang out with us. We've got a bunch of spots reserved. We'll be right out in front of James Motors. We've got, uh, police department, public, there's police department, public works, some trustees have signed up to be in and around.
Village Hall.
Village Hall here, so.
And what day is it?
Sunday, four to six.
But it's to the Trumps, though, they're not coming to the village.
No, but they've got the whole area all blocked off. They're gonna have food vendors and stuff right over here. They're doing it a little bit different before, with you, like, it started. We could send a map.
Why don't you post on the Hampshire app?
Sorry.
Okay.
But. It'll be a good time.
I wanna see it.
Do we have to be in costume?
You could.
I could go as a trustee.
I think you should go as a trustee. You look, you look kinda funny if you were here. Any other, oh, we, we have an announcement.
I just have one announcement. I would like to, uh, remind everybody or tell everybody that, um, the Secretary of State will be sending the, uh, Department of Motor Vehicles, uh, mobile out here to assemble the center receivers office again on October thirty-first. Um, and that's good news, because, uh, they have called out the owner of that property, and they can, the reason they use these mobile units is they're considering putting a permanent location in Hampshire. So we want a really big turnout. If you remember, there were people complaining on Facebook last time that they couldn't get appointments, because they ran out of appointments.
Yeah.
We want them to run out again, because then they'll know that they have to break a building out. But they have actually called the, uh, owner of the building, asking about leasing rates. So it's pretty serious. We want to get the word out, it's already out, um, I get this, I think, uh, yeah, so the Secretary of State's already, already sent the notice out, and we'll be reposting this, Mayor Wilson, please tell everybody October thirty-first.
So you sign up to get like your, what license you're supposed to get the.
Yeah.[1647.34]